I call the formal session of Virginia Beach City Council to order. Our invocation this evening is Reverend Ken Christian Jr., pastor of New Life Presbyterian Church, ask you all to stand and after the invocation remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. It's you, Father Jim Park.
Lord God, once again we come before you asking for your wisdom and insights. For in mysterious ways you call us to be brothers and sisters to one another. And as we look at the work of our council and the city of Virginia Beach, you challenge us to continue to discover even better ways to be faithful to the lives of every one of our citizens. Be with us this night, we pray, in his name, amen?
Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and new republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll be back.
Thank you, Father. May I have a motion to certify the closed session?
So moved.
Second. Vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the informal and formal session minutes of October the 2nd?
So moved. Second.
Any additions or police? If not, the vote is open.
Ms. Kane.
I wasn't here.
Thank you. By a vote of eight to zero, with Ms. Kane and Ms. Wilson both abstaining, approved the minutes as submitted.
We have a couple of presentations tonight. The first one is the Extra Mile Day, and I'd ask Father Park to come forward if he would please.
Thank you, Mayor. Go ahead.
The proclamation reads, "Whereas the city of Virginia Beach is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service; and whereas Virginia Beach is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contributions to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community; and whereas Virginia Beach is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community; and whereas Virginia Beach acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 575 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support the Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2017. Now therefore I, Louis R. Jones, Mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, Virginia, do hereby proclaim October 16, 2018, Extra Mile Day in Virginia Beach, and as I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, communities, country, or world a better place; and witness whereof, I am here and to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Virginia Beach, Virginia, to be affixed the 16th day of October, 2018."
Thank you, Mayor. This proclamation, first of all, I want to thank you for the proclamation. This proclamation is one more way of recognizing that our city can pride itself not only on its safety, not only on its economic development, not only its excellent schools, but also on the men and women who are truly heroes as our volunteers. They are heroes not only in the sense of responding to emergencies and saving lives, but also in the daily work that offers key support to our libraries, our parks and rec facilities and programs, our new homeless resource center, our communications department, our aquarium, our agricultural programs, as well as our public works and utilities. But also, in so many ways, our real heroes are the volunteer resource managers who enable and support and appreciate our volunteers. They're so key, and we are thankful for them. Also, this year, our resource office has established a key to those volunteer groups who come to us in times of disaster, such as in Hurricane Matthew, and such as Rubicon, United Methodist Corps, Operation Blessing. It allows us to work closely with VOAD, the volunteer organization that's active in disasters. So thank you for the proclamation. Thank you to our almost 15,000 volunteers. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is for the Native American Heritage Month, and I understand Chief Lee Lockamy of the Nansmont Indian Tribe is here. This proclamation reads, "Whereas Native Americans have made use of the natural resources in Virginia and Virginia Beach for over 15,000 years; and whereas Native Americans prospered in Virginia as hunters and gatherers for thousands of years living in bands and encampments; and whereas Native Americans developed tribal relationships and settled in hamlets and villages; and whereas the Chesapeake Indian Tribe resided in a village in Virginia Beach at the time of our, or just prior to, the early 17th century settlement of the region by England; and whereas members of the Nansmont Indian Tribe moved eastward settling in areas that included Virginia Beach; and whereas an Indian reservation in the Punggol area of Virginia Beach was occupied by Nansmont Indians in the late 17th century; and whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia officially recognized the Nansmont Indian Tribe in 1985; and whereas the United States of America officially recognized the Nansmont Indian Tribe in 2018; and whereas members of the Nansmont Indian Tribe play an essential role in the Virginia Beach community today; and whereas Chief Lee Lockamy is a resident of the city of Virginia Beach; and whereas November was first declared as Native American Heritage Month in the United States of America in 1990; and whereas November is also commemorated as Native American Heritage Month in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Now therefore I, Louis R. Jones, Mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, Virginia, do hereby proclaim November 2018 Native American Heritage Month in Virginia Beach, further call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Virginia Beach to recognize the contributions of Native Americans to the history and development of the city, state, and nation, and to commemorate this month with appropriate activities. In testimony whereof, I am here and to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Virginia Beach, Virginia, to be affixed the 16th day of October, 2018. Chief?
Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say that the chief is one of our wonderful members on the Historic Preservation Commission.
Right.
He's done a great job.
Thank you for your services, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll now have a public hearing on the Southeastern Public Service Authority of Virginia amended and restated Articles of Incorporation. Do we have any speakers?
There are no speakers, sir.
Thank you. We'll now go to the consent agenda. Vice Mayor Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval under the consent agenda under ordinances and resolutions. Item J1, resolution to approve and adopt the amended and restated Articles of Incorporation regarding Southeastern Public Service Authority of Virginia, SIPSA. Item J3, resolution to move and reschedule the November 6, 2018, regular meeting of the city council to November 13, 2018, with time and location to remain the same. Item J5, resolution to support the city's 2018 application to the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT, regarding bicycle and pedestrian safety program at Pacific Avenue between 5th and 40th Streets. J6, ordinance to amend City Code Section 8-70 regarding composition of the local Board of Building Code Appeals Electrical Division. J7, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city property known as Westneck Road, Backgate Drive, and Ten Barn Way located adjacent to the subdivision of Kingston Estates regarding construction and maintenance of two entry wing walls. Item 8, J8, ordinance to accept and appropriate from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, A $33,750 in grant funds to the FY 2018-19 Police Department operating budget regarding Marine Patrol dive equipment. 8B, $1,323,990 in grant funds to the FY 2018-19 Fire Department operating budget regarding continued operation of Virginia Task Force II Urban Search and Rescue Team. Item 9, ordinance to accept and appropriate A $15,550 in lieu of park reservation from the Trotter Court subdivision to the Park Special Use Facility Development and Renovations III CIP. Item 9B, $46,128.75 in donations from the Friends of Virginia Beach Public Libraries to the FY 2018-19 Department of Public Libraries operating budget.
Now declare a public hearing on planning.
Under planning, item K1, Kyle W. and Bailey B. Fett for a variance to Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations regarding lot width at 633 Princess Anne Road, District 7, Princess Anne. Item K2, Princess Anne Meadows LLC William &amp; James Snowden for conditional change of zoning from AG1 Agricultural to conditional R10 Residential and modification of proffers of the 2,800, 2,900 block of Princess Anne Road dated September 22, 2015, District 7, Princess Anne. Item K3, Greer Han Enterprises Incorporated Pools Dockside LLC for modification of conditions regarding a commercial marina at 3311 Shore Drive, approved April 22, 1974, District 5, Item 4, Crespo Enterprises Inc. doing business as Roadrunner Towing and AC Enterprises Inc. doing business as Logan's Towing, 5312 Virginia Beach Boulevard LLC for a conditional use permit regarding a bulk storage yard at 5312 Virginia Beach Boulevard, District 2, Kempsville, noting that that is with modified condition 1A as discussed in the workshop. Item 5, Nofisat Teo &amp; Bolu Jones Comalafe for a conditional use permit regarding family daycare home at 1961 Arlington Arch Drive, District 1 in Centerville. Item 6, Mavis Bahado Singh &amp; Nicholas Grady for a conditional use permit regarding a family daycare at 1605 Cliffwood Drive in the Rose Hall District. Item 7, Jasmine Gold Cruise Living Trust for a conditional use permit regarding a family daycare home at 4440 Passaro Drive, District 3, Rose Hall. Item 8, Anderson's Virginia Beach LLC AGIVB Holdings LLC for a conditional use permit regarding outdoor recreational facility at 1925 Fisher Arch, District 7, Princess Anne. Item 9, Mary Bozard, Thomas Lee Bozard for a conditional use permit regarding a residential kennel at 2880 Indian River Road, District 7, Princess Anne. Item 10, The Edge Sports LLC, Fairfield TIC LLC, BCP TIC LLC, DMFTIC LLC, GCK TIC LLC for a conditional use permit regarding indoor recreation facility at 5258A Fairfield Shopping Center, District 3, Kempsville. Item 11, ordinance to adopt and incorporate into the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan the Burton Station Strategic Growth Area Master Plan 2018, which will supersede the Burton Station Strategic Growth Area Master Plan 2009, and amend the executive summary sections 1.2 Urban Areas and Chapter 3 Plan Implementation and Agenda for Future Action of the Comprehensive Plan 2016 pertaining to the Burton Station Strategic Growth Area Plan. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made. Second. Vote is open.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor.
All right. We'll now go to ordinances and resolutions, but I would like to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items and items where a public hearing is required by state law. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Also, when speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk to record. We'll now go to item J2, which is a resolution to adopt the city's 2019 legislative agenda.
Danny Lee Ginn. And after Mr. Ginn, Gary McCollum.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. My name is Danny Lee Ginn. I own property at 1945 Pleasant Ridge Road for the last 30 years that I pay taxes to the city. But my permanent residence is 3844 Dare Circle in Norfolk, Virginia. My phone number is 857-4501. I've come here tonight because I picked up the paper, and to my horror, I read that the city of Virginia Beach was considering switching over to a ward system. And as an individual who has lived under the ward system for the last 40 years, I came, hopefully, to give you some information in making your decision. In the article, it stated that the at-large system discouraged competition. That is not true. The at-large system enables the citizens of Virginia Beach to choose all the representatives and vote for all the representatives who sit at this table and make the decision. Under the ward system, and once we live in Norfolk, I am allowed to choose only one individual out of seven. So therefore, I have a voice of only one individual that I can pick that will represent me. But if there are other council members are doing something that is not advantageous to the city, or I like, I have no say in what they do. So the ward system is a much more non-competitive system. Secondly, the article indicated that the at-large system was an advantage to the wealthy and to the special interests. Again, that is not true. Because the wealthy and the special interests are going to have to influence all of you because the people vote for all of you. And therefore, they have a much harder position in influencing your government. In the ward system, all they have to do is pick out a particular ward that they want to influence for a lot of money, a lot of interest, vote one individual who will swing the vote in their favor, and therefore, they have much more control. So your system is a much more open system than the ward system. The third point in the article is that the at-large system was a disadvantage to the minority. I would disagree compared to the ward system. In the ward system in Norfolk, the minorities are kind of limited to three representatives, and have been sold this, that they can have three representatives. Yet in the city of Virginia Beach, the minorities have the right to run in any ward and put up a candidate throughout the city if they choose to do so. In Norfolk, that is not particularly the case. So those three points are not really valid. The second point I want to make is that once you go into a ward system, your mentality will change. You will begin to stop thinking about what is good for the compass of the city, and you'll begin to think about what is good for the ward. An example of this is I attended the informal meeting in Norfolk City Council. Tommy Smigle, one of the representatives, made the statement that he was more concerned about what he could do for his ward than what he could do for the city of Norfolk.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it, and ask you not to go to the ward system.
Thank you.
Gary McCollum. And after Mr. McCollum will be Marlena Castelluzza.
Gary McCollum, 3901 Meeting House Road, husband of Cookie, father of Ruth. Mr. Mayor, council members, I also stand in opposition. I believe that there might be an amendment to modify the current way that we vote. And I stand in opposition to that amendment if it goes forward, not for the same reasons that the previous speaker mentioned, because I do believe that the current system that we have does disenfranchise minorities. I also believe it disenfranchises others, frankly, who don't have wealthy contacts, business interests, and others. And I think that's why we need to make a change. But making a change to what I believe I've heard, which would be a seven district, four at-large system, does not solve the problem. There are a number of ways that this could be changed and could be improved. You could go to an all-district voting system with an at-large mayor, which some cities have used. Stack ranking, there's a lot of study been done on stack ranking voting and how that actually changes and levels the playing field for candidates. The bottom line is that the current system that we have today, it's not working. And it's not just the fact that we don't have minority representation on the council. It's not working because we're not treating every part of the city the same way. There are issues that happen in certain neighborhoods, problems, issues that don't happen in certain other parts of the city. There are certain parts of the city that get more attention than other parts of the city. And so I do think there needs to be a change. You are aware that there are legal challenges being undertaken as we speak around the current system. And I would just hope that members of this council will look at this, look at this as an opportunity to make a change so that all of the citizens, all of the citizens, not just some, but all of the citizens are fairly represented. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Marlena Castelluzza.
Good evening, Mayor Jones. My name is Marlena Castelluzza, Chair of Virginia Beach Taxpayer Alliance, and on behalf of our board and membership, I'm here to express our support of a legislative agenda proposal put forth by Councilwoman Abbott and Councilwoman Moss. Both are trustworthy ethical members of this body and have proven themselves to be staunch advocates of the citizens of Virginia Beach. Unlike some members of city council, they can be depended upon to hold to their commitments and once given their word, will adhere to their obligations. Moss and Abbott have along with City Councilman Dr. Bobby Dyer not feared facing a room of retired school board members, former political officials, military officers, educators, businessmen and women, and overall extremely well-educated, highly informed group of taxpaying citizens. Acting Mayor Jones and City Councilwoman Henley have participated in VBTA forums as well, and they're still alive to tell about it. But it would be easy to see why a less knowledgeable and unskilled city council member would dread facing such an audience. It's illuminating to have experienced it firsthand. Unlike authors of this proposal who present a principled position to benefit Virginia Beach citizens, our organization is anticipating, given Mr. Davenport's history of duplicity and insecure behaviors, he'll oppose this legislative agenda and perhaps put forth a Bruce Thompson or other developer authorized proposal as a substitute motion. And unlike the first gentleman who spoke, it is very apparent in anyone who has lived in this city for any length of time, when the former mayor needed to raise $700,000 for a $30,000-a-year job, and we have a candidate now who's raising over $200,000 with $100,000 committed to television, we are not in a system that is fair, that gives every citizen the right to access to their councilmen. We sincerely entreat you to make the right and correct vote and vote the ethical way for the Moss and Abbott legislative agenda proposal. Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
All right. May I have a motion?
Question to approve?
For what?
For what? What are we?
I was going to ask, are we doing all of it?
How are we going to? I mean, there's a lot of items in the legislative agenda. How are we going to?
I have a suggestion, Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, you may.
I know we're trying to get to what everyone agrees to first and then vote on the things that there's dissent on. So I thought a good way might go, because it'll be quick, is the mayor could say, number one, you know, just raise our hand, he can see if there's objection. Someone's going to vote no, then we just all vote on that separately. We could quickly, you know, efficiently get through this and allow the people, because I know there's some things I'm not going to vote for, and there's some by person. I think that would work, Mr. Mayor. I would recommend that.
All right. And then make a motion based on that.
And the consent agenda would be on those items for which there was no objection, and then we'd vote on the balance individually. I don't know any other way to get there.
Do you have a suggestion?
I have no objection to that, Ms. Clerk. Is that something, Madam Clerk, is that something that you can accommodate?
What I anticipate, what I would anticipate, that the motion would say, this is the motion to approve items 1, 3, doot, 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 and then they would be done, and then we'd go back in order of the ones not picked and vote individually.
Well, it's just the last four, correct?
No.
Do five at a time?
Why don't we do one at a time, and whatever passes, pass it.
I can do that, too.
All right.
Well, why not just say up to the first 19 who opposes some of these?
What are the ones that you want pulled? Let's do it.
Let's just do it that way.
Yeah.
Number 3.
Number 3. All right. Anybody else have one?
We're talking about the first 19, is that right?
And the last four.
But I mean to approve the first 19.
No, he wants to pull, John wants to pull item 3.
Correct.
Is that right, John?
Correct.
And...
Do you want to just vote no again, or do you want to pull?
I'll pull, I want to discuss it. But thank you for asking.
And are there others that want to pull other parts?
Up to 19, 1 through 19.
I'm sorry.
We're just talking about 1 through 19, correct?
Just talking about all of them. Which others do you want to pull?
The last.
Can I ask, there is one other one I would like to pull, and I'm sorry, I should have paid attention to it, the internet sales tax.
Which number is that?
That's item 10.
10?
I apologize.
All right. How about we do this? I'm going to go down the list, and if somebody wants an item pulled, we'll pull it, and then we'll vote on the rest of it.
We just did this.
Yeah, can I make a motion?
Except for the last four.
Can I make a motion to approve items on the agenda 1 through 19, with the exception of 3 and 10? Is that...
That's the second.
I'd like, I'll make that motion, please.
Everybody ready for that?
Yep.
All right. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Well, can I just clarify this? So we're dividing the question, so we're not just saying we're voting on these and we're defeating the others, correct?
We're just voting on these and then...
We're not, yeah, but I don't want to be in a position where we've taken 3 and 10 completely out.
Right. Right. My motion is to vote affirmatively for items 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19, if that clarifies my motion.
Yeah, but my question is, does that automatically defeat items 3, 10, 20, 21?
No, we pulled them.
I don't know. I mean, we have to divide it, I think.
It doesn't defeat 20, 21, and 22 and 23 either.
You have one resolution that says that the city's delegation of the General Assembly is requested to sponsor and/or support legislation in the 2019 session of the General Assembly that would carry out the goals and objectives of the city as set forth in its legislative agenda, which is the attached document. You're going to have to include or remove from that attached document items that are currently printed in it. Rather than, rather than, one way you could do it is to have a motion to exclude each item that somebody wishes to exclude. You could vote it up and down, and then have a master motion to approve the resolution with the items left in. And that way, you could still debate all of them as you go through. But you are going to have to have a... But you are going to have to have a, you know, we can rewrite this resolution for you, but the resolution's going to have to be rewritten if you're doing it in three separate motions.
All right. How about, can I get you to withdraw your motion?
Yes, sir. Withdrawn.
That's not voted off.
I think we're in charge, you can say what you want.
You can do it however you want to do it, but we will have to rewrite the, just tell us how to rewrite the resolution, then. We'll do it.
I'd like a motion to approve the legislative agenda, or to separate for individual vote items three, ten, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three from the legislative agenda.
I would make that motion, sir.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
And he's withdrawing his prior motion, correct?
He did.
All right, very good.
Yeah. All right. Motion, votes open.
So by a vote of ten to zero, can you close that? You have approved the motion to separate items three, ten, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three from the legislative agenda.
Thank you. All right, now we'll go to voting rights, item three.
Yes, the reason, there is, if I could, Mr. Mayor.
You have to approve first.
Yes.
Do you have a discussion before the motion, or?
I'm waiting for you to give your discussion, yes.
All right, usually we have a motion first. But here's my reason, and it's the same reasoning as for the constitutional amendment for term limits, because it's the same reasoning, so I won't repeat it twice. I applaud independent commissions, but deciding how the General Assembly and how Congress should be elected is not the responsibility of this body, number one. That's why I'm not voting for it, it's not our job. And number two, the same thing with term limits, deciding what is or should not be a constitutional amendment, since it doesn't just apply uniquely to Virginia Beach, is also not within the purview and the jurisdiction of this body. So why are we recommending to our superior body how they should manage their affairs when we often complain when they try to micromanage our own? We might invite more micromanagement than we want. So I just think we should stick to the things that we have direct equities that are unique to the city of Virginia Beach. And so it's on that basis that I'm voting no on both voting rights and on the term limits, and not on the merits of the issue, but on the proper jurisdiction of this body to opine on it.
All right. All right. May I have a motion on item three?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Vote is open.
By a vote of nine to one, Mr. Moss voting no, you have approved the legislative item for voting rights in the legislative package.
Now we'll go to item ten, which is the state of Virginia enacted enabling legislation for sales tax on all internet sales. We have any discussion on that?
Well, I did. And I think the, I think that's something we need to do, but this is the comment that I made before, because we're asking for money in a lot of other categories, we're asking for money. You may recall this conversation. This is K through twelve. But we have other areas we're always asking money for, too. So what is the direction, because there's more request in here than there is money. So when it comes down to the time for the, asking our legislative liaison and lobbyists in Richmond, the General Assembly says there's X bucks, and you're asking for this, or you're asking for something back here, what is the priority of this request of K through twelve? Is that superior to all other requests? Because everybody's trying to spend that same half-billion dollars, and I know that you can only spend it once. So my concern is, what is the priority? Is this our top priority? So when Senator Steph or Frank Wagner go and ask Bob Mathias, well, this is what you got, you're asking us for, what's your highest priority? What do you want from us? Would you rather have K through twelve, or do you rather have some of these other things? What is it? And that's, that's what I'm trying to be after, is for us to clarify for the staff, what's the priority of this over all other money requests? Is this our top priority? I think it should be, but is it? And that's what I'm really asking.
Do you have a comment, Mr. Hannity?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Moss, members of council, we have many, number one, priorities in the city of Virginia Beach. But we pride ourselves as being a financially stable and best-managed city, and we do that by having a good balance when we go about distributing the public's money. Our school system is a top-ranked school system in the United States. But its current infrastructure redevelopment program is not unlike some of the other programs that we've tackled, like drugging, where we had no program, and it's hundreds of years to make headway associated with it. And the opportunity, by Supreme Court decision, to fairly tax goods provided through the internet provides a windfall to the Commonwealth of Virginia. And the opportunity for us to make known to our delegation and to the legislators in Richmond that the need to improve their investment in education, both in school teacher pay and in contributions to the construction and redevelopment of our school facilities, will go a long way to ensuring that the Commonwealth of Virginia remains a most and best-educated state in the Union. So I would hope that the city council would follow through with this recommendation so that you're giving guidance to your elected officials in Richmond where they might put their money.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I just want to read the last sentence of this request, so I think that my answer is that it is our number one priority, all this works, because it goes on to read, my quote, "Any new revenue derived from the expansion of taxing internet sales should be reserved for K through twelve, especially increasing average teacher compensation and school board construction." So my constructive interpretation of that would be, if I was Bob Mathias and we passed this, and the General Assembly says, hey, we only have so much money, where would you want to put it? That our answer would be that if it comes from this internet sales source, that our number one priority is schools. And that's all I'm trying to make sure that there is, that what we think we voted and said is what Mr. Mathias and our lobbyists would understand, and that would be the message that's communicated, and you affirm that that is true. Thank you very much.
Yes, yes.
This is more of a question for Mark and a general statement. I think I should abstain from this, as I recently have acquired interest in a business that deals with online sales. And I apologize for not getting that to you till then. So I'm going to abstain on this one, due to my interest.
All right, thank you. Well, I sponsored this because I believe that with the amount of internet sales that are taking place, and the impact that the loss of tax revenue that the city and the state are receiving, are not receiving, as a result of that, is having a serious impact on the ability of the state to send us the kind of funding that we need for our schools. And for that reason, I believe it's something we ought to do and ask them to do, and because otherwise, the local taxpayers of Virginia Beach are going to have to make up the difference.
I'm with you, Mr. Mayor.
And so that's why I sponsored it, and I believe it's the right thing to do. May I have a motion?
I'd still like to say something. I've been hearing about this for a long time, not just now, but there's another facet to this. This was also called the Main Street Tax, because all of our Main Street storefronts and businesses were being hurt by the online sales, because someone could go into Walmart and look at a baseball bat, and then go online and say, well, I can get that baseball bat online and not have to pay the sales tax. So they could take it and swing it and try it out, and utilize the store, and then go and, right there, order it from someone else. And so this also helps our storefronts, our local storefronts and businesses. So, yes, it's nice to get the revenue, but it's also going to help businesses and a lot of small businesses. So there's, I just wanted to bring up that other facet to this. It's also called the Main Street.
You want to make a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? The vote is open.
By a vote of nine to zero, Ms. Abbott abstaining, you have approved item J.210 to enable legislation for sales tax on internet sales to be included in the legislative package.
All right, now we'll go to item twenty, which is a city charter limitation on the issuance of public facility revenue bonds and other efforts to circumvent the city charter debt provisions. Any way, discussion?
Well, I'm going to move for its adoption, and after, if there's a second, then we'll have discussion.
Second.
All right. Motion made, and a second. We'll now go to discussion. Yes, Mr.?
This is an amendment I propose.
Okay, let's, let's...
Oh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. No, 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 no.
Please, I defer.
I apologize. This is an amendment that I propose not to modify the city charter in terms of its effect, but to permit the current city charter's intent to be enforced. The current city charter specifies to the effect that this city council can issue general obligation bonds, meaning bonds backed by the full faith and credit of you, the taxpayers, a year, plus the amount of general obligation debt that they retired in the prior year. And to borrow more than that amount, which still requires eight votes to authorize, but to borrow more than that amount, they have to go to the people in a referendum and get the public to affirmatively endorse and co-sign additional borrowing. The purpose of that charter amendment was to ensure that no governing body could burden the public with more debt than what they wanted without their active consent. That was back in 1962, and the charter was ratified in '63 by the public, pretty smart folks, I would say. Maybe Congress should have something like that. But, and that's kind of the practice that we went through for up until the '90s, when we discovered, or someone discovered, as government always tries to find a way to escape fiscal discipline, you know, local governments are no exception, they found out there was a way that the city could go into additional debt without asking the public if they got a third party, the Virginia Beach Development Authority, to issue debt in its name that has no revenues. Well, how would someone lend some issued debt for a body that has no underlying revenues? Well, because the city enters into an agreement, a memorandum of agreement, that says that we guarantee, well, not guarantee, subject to annual appropriation, that you issue this debt, we're going to pay you the principal and interest, we're going to rebate that to you, and then you, in fact, then pay the debt. Well, the legal distinction, and it's only a legal distinction, is because it's issued by a third party, it's subject to annual appropriation, meaning we don't have to pay it, and they couldn't come back to us and ask us for money, they would just be able to seize the assets for which the debt was used to purchase, that they now can borrow, and they have borrowed $600 million since this practice was started back in 1998. Now, you can say it is legal, correct. Is it the intent of our charter? Is it the covenant that we take our oath for? Are we following the intent of the charter? No, we are not. Now, some people would say, oh, that the city would come to an end because we wouldn't be able to do commercial development without this. But when you look at what we spent money, we are now paying for schools with this kind of money. We are building, we're building roads, we're building recreation centers, we're building lots of things that fundamentally in the past, we used general obligation debt for. Now, we also know that we pay about 25 to 50 basis points more for the interest on those bonds than we would general obligation bonds, and the difference of that basis points varies on the spread between the 10-year treasury note yield and municipal market. The bigger that spread, the more that basis point differential in the types of debts that's issued. So not only does it cost more, but the fundamental principle is, it's a breach of the intent of our charter. So what this amendment says, which would be subject to approval by the voters, I've always believed that any charter amendment should be approved by the voters, but what we're really wanting people to do is to live by the charter, would make sure that all debt issued by third parties would be treated just as it was general obligation bond debt, would be subject to that same provision, and that would have meant that most of the $600 million would have gone to the public in a bond referendum, and you could decide if you wanted a Sandler Center, or a Sportsplex, or a new convention center, or when they built schools, you would have a chance to decide what you went into debt for if they're exceeding the charter. And so this amendment is not doing, creating any new authority, it's just giving the rights that our charter vested in the public when the General Assembly approved it, and it closes a loophole that allows this body to circumvent getting the public's ratification and active consent when they issue debt in excess of the charter limits.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Dyer.
Yeah. You know, we have a couple items on here that are very important and really change a lot of the fundamental ways that we are going to seek to run government in the city of Virginia Beach. You know, this is one of them, and, you know, the vote on the district voting is another one. And my only concern is that bringing this forward, where was, you know, where was the discussion and understanding and, you know, just trying to educate the public and ourselves on, you know, some of the ravocations? You know, there's a saying, law of unintended consequences is out there. And so I would respectfully recommend that, you know, we have a discussion on this rather than vote on it today. And, you know, a couple of years ago, you know, we did a, you know, my class did a study on district voting, and I've been a proponent of district voting for a while. But what came out of that class was there are positives and negatives to almost every different type of voting, as Mr. McCollum may even point it out. Is this necessarily the best vehicle to take us where we're going to go? So I'm not saying discount, you know, the intent of what's going on with these two major items, but I would just say, would it be in our best interest to delay, discuss, and, you know, figure out what the ramifications are of this? You know, we're talking about major changes, the way we do government. You know, I just think it's worth a little bit more time and attention.
Do you want to make a substitute?
Any further discussion? I'm sorry, what did you say?
I'm sorry. I'd like to make a substitute motion.
All right.
I'd like to remove this from our legislative package.
Second.
Motion's been made to...
Amanda, can you clear the?
To remove this from...
You can go ahead and change it.
Motion is made to remove this from our legislative package.
Don't, since I seconded, don't we have to vote on, oh, you're making a substitute motion? I apologize. Yeah.
We have more discussion, which is great.
All right. Substitute motion is on the floor. Any further discussion on the substitute motion? Yes, Mr. McCollum?
I think it's, I hope the public is watching, because what I'm fully saying is that they don't, this body, what this vote will tell, doesn't want to live under the discipline and under the financial commitment. When we take an oath of office, it isn't just to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth, it's also our city charter. And what they're really saying is that, you know, it's okay to have a loophole, and it's okay not to follow the intent. I'm sure that's what we all teach our children, you know, don't do, but don't follow, know what the intent is? I'm sure many people in the military know about commander's intent. What is the intent of that charter? And this, what this really tells you is, they don't respect the rights of the voters vested in them in the charter, and they would rather continue the practice that we have today, where they can go out and borrow money without your consent on six votes, not even eight, because they know better than you, the people who have to pay it. And that's the message of that substitute motion. Do take note.
Yes, Ms. Henley.
I don't believe that's the intent of this motion at all. I think the fact that this came into our proposed package after we had had all of the discussions and after we had had the public hearings, and we have not had the opportunity to discuss this with the public, is the reason I don't think we should do it at this point, because we haven't had any discussion about how it would change the way we are doing things. It may very well be that we do want to change at some point, but at this point, we just haven't had that discussion with the public. What would it mean as far as our ability to build the schools and so forth? And I think it's just that this has come too late in the process.
Mr. Earn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, to kind of piggyback what Barbara's saying, I mean, you know, part of the discussion that hasn't occurred here is that this ability, our ability to do this, has given us the opportunity to refinance current debt that we have on a regular basis. I mean, certainly if Patty Phillips were here, she would probably be able to quantify the vast amount of money it is that we've been able to save by actually timing the issuance of debt and the issuance of reissuing debt. And so...
And so, to Barbara's point, there has been none of that in terms of discussion to put this on at the 11th hour on our legislative agenda, and for that reason, I'm happy to support your motion there, Mr. McCall.
Well, on November 6th, we'll all have a chance to be heard.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, the vote is?
So the vote is to?
The vote is to remove, the, to, the vote is on the substitute motion, which is to remove this item from the legislative agenda.
By a vote of eight to two, you have approved the substitute motion to remove item J. 220 regarding the issuance of debt from the legislative package.
All right, the next item is item 21, which is single-member district voting for the seven district representative.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may make discussion or make a comment before I make a motion, I want, I introduced this, and Councilman Moss was, agreed to co-sponsor with me, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the history and why I decided to submit this to our legislative packet. And it kind of starts back a little further than just the city of Virginia Beach. When the U.S. Constitution was formed, it didn't give direction to any level of government how voting should take place, and therefore, an at-large system defaulted. And what happened, even at the congressional level, was that enormous groups of people were left unrepresented, and by practice, by 1842, only six states of the 28 that were in existence at that time were continued to practice an at-large voting system. And eventually, Congress decided to go out and ban an at-large system at that level. And over the period of time between 1842 and 1965, the ban was enacted and removed and enacted and removed, but by 1965, the Voting Rights Act amendment was passed, and the ban was made permanent. And as a result, almost all states at that time removed the at-large system, not only on the congressional level, but at the state level as well, and that, of course, trickled down to local elections. Fast forward to after the Civil War, it became a popular and common tool to create an at-large election system at the municipal level, because there was no state or federal direction as to whether they could or couldn't do that, to create at-large voting races for the strict intent of prohibiting minority or ethnic majority rule. Interestingly, interestingly enough, as I did research on the subject, it wasn't specifically against African-Americans, but actually national groups like French, Greeks, Irish, Polish, Jewish, Syrians, Lithuanians, Armenians, but of course, at that time, most certainly African-Americans. Saying all that, I think it's very important that we also note in 1989, Norfolk was forced to remove their at-large voting system because it didn't pass the sniff test, if you will. And basically, the Norfolk case in Collins versus the city of Norfolk, they were trying to decide whether the political processes are equal and open, and I feel like we are facing the same challenge and have been facing the same challenge, and I wonder why we didn't address this in 1989 when a city so close to us addressed it. That said, hearing the people that were able to come and speak tonight and some of the feedback, I would be willing to withdraw not only this amendment, but my term limit amendment as well, with a good faith agreement that we would be willing to add this as a referendum item to the next election cycle, and if I need to get with you to draft that for a different vote on the next voting meeting. But I don't think citizens should have to petition to have this item voted on in a referendum. I think we, as a body, can make that decision for ourselves, and if we're in agreement to do that and add that as a referendum item to whether or not the city of Virginia Beach wants board voting, or a hybrid of that, then I would withdraw both of those. So I, I think I need to make a substitute motion to withdraw. Is that correct?
No.
There's no motion at all on the table.
Well, I would need to make a motion to withdraw. Is that correct, Mark?
There will need to be a, a motion to deal with it. You would make, I, I understand your motion to be to not include it in this package. Is that correct?
Right, right. You need to make a motion to remove it from the package, from the?
Well, I said a good faith agreement.
Well, I mean, I, I need to?
Okay, Mr. Wood first.
Was there a second yet to the motion that's made? What's the motion on the table? I just want to know what the motion is.
There is one.
There is no motion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I would, I would agree with, with what Rosemary said, because if any of this stuff was going to be in a referendum, it would need to be in an election where the, the largest percentage of the people turned out, which would be a presidential election. So you're saying you want it on the next election, which would be an odd-year election, which if my delegate's unopposed and somebody else's delegate's unopposed, you're not gonna have a very big turnout. So, I mean, I, I don't think that that's, that that's something that you would want to do in an odd-year election. Likewise, I don't know that there's any way that we could bind the council, the future council, because it's going to be new after January 1st anyway. It's a different council then, so I, I don't know. I think it needs to kind of stand on its own one way or the other, either go forward or not, and then work on the, work on the referendum. I'm not saying the referendum's a bad idea or a good idea, I'm just saying, I, I think realistically, it just needs to be one or the other.
Well, I, I'd like to enter in on this one, because I, I like what Jessica said, to be honest with you. I think the, the idea of letting the public decide whether or not they want to do this particular thing is by referendum is the better way to go, rather than us make that decision.
Correct.
Unilaterally. So I, if, I will say this to you, Jessica, if you make the motion to remove it from the legislative agenda and it passes, I will support putting it on a referendum. I would, I think Jim is right, it would probably be better in the year when we have the most number of voters coming out, but I will support that.
And this would also give us the opportunity for the civic engagement, the education, to find out best practices, you know, and, you know, what works in other municipalities and what really doesn't work.
I'm, I'm not opposed to any further discussion. I think, I think what my concern is, is that we need to have a call to action, that we are going to take steps in that direction. I think the community is concerned, and I don't think that that's just, you know, categorized just to a minority community. I mean, especially considering after what we learned today in our workshop, there's, there's a big concern with how we do our election cycles, and I think perhaps, you know, I, I don't disagree, Jim, that we should make this the best, the biggest voting turnout. I think that's, that's a good comment. I just feel like we need to indicate to the public that we are going to do something to start this conversation, and I really, I just have a lot of heartache with the petitions and, and people trying to, to take their time aside when this is an issue I feel like should have been addressed a long time ago, frankly. So, you know, I, I will go ahead and withdraw both of them. I'll make a motion to withdraw, and then hopefully, we can further this conversation.
I'll second that, but I'd like to comment.
The motion is to withdraw 21 and 22.
It has been addressed in the past with other referendums, so.
Not since 1996.
Both ways, it's gone both ways, like light rail.
But it has, but you said it hasn't been addressed, and it has.
Well, it has, and I think there's the question of how many times do we keep putting the same question on, and you know, we can put the light rail back on.
As many times as the public demands it, because that's who we work for.
And, but, you're saying every question can be put on as many times as the public demands, not just this one?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, just so we're clear.
I'm willing to have that engagement anytime.
Okay, on any question?
On any question.
All right.
As the elections are formed.
We have a motion on the floor to remove it. Is that correct, Jessica?
That's correct.
The interim limits.
21 and 22.
21 and 22.
21 and 22.
Yes.
From the legislative agenda.
Can I have a point, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
There, I just would hope that, because I asked for it myself, and I know, Amanda, the city clerk, I got, there was the study that was done, there was actually a council commission on this whole topic, I think it was 1992, sticks in my mind, but probably be a good idea to, I got a copy of it, I know many of you probably haven't read that, but to provide all the members a copy, and also post it on our, the city council webpage, so people who want to go and pull that down can see the extensive, Don Clark was our lawyer at the time, I remember Mr. Clark, but he was on there, Al Balca was on there, that was the first time that a district council member won his district but lost his seat. That's kind of spewed, that kind of motivated that study, where if she would put that on, I think that would be a great starter, because there was a lot of research done.
All right, the vote is open.
By a vote of 10 to zero, you have approved the motion to remove J. 21 and 22, the voting district representative and the term limits.
All right. And the last one is item 23, which is to establish the Hurricane and Flooding Risk Reduction and Bond Rating Protection Act of 2019. And I believe Ms. Abbott sponsored that. Do you want to comment?
I mean, I, I think that the, the item stands for itself, but I think it's important that we ask that this be reintroduced.
Yes, Ms. Henley.
Well, I, I think that I would like to have a briefing on just what is encompassed in this, because I was a little concerned about appointing an authority for the state that would then make recommendations and decisions, and I just really hate to see the localities lose the, the weight of what a locality thinks as far as what it needs to do to address the flooding in our areas. I mean, the localities at this point have done all the heavy lifting, and I just want to make sure that we don't have a state authority appointed by the governor or whomever, that we have no opportunity then to, you know, that would overweight what the localities are doing. So I just have, I just don't understand what this would do, and even if we do have the briefing and decide this is something that might be a good idea, I really think it would be better coming from the region and maybe be on the HRPDC legislative agenda, because I think it's more than just the one city that would want to do this. So it's just that I don't understand what this legislation would do enough, and, and just reading it, I had a lot of questions about it, because I've not heard the discussion from the gentleman who would be introducing it as to what their intent is.
Mr. Mathias?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to give us an explanation?
This legislation was introduced by Senator Wagner, and I believe Delegate Myers in the last session. And it would basically try to get the Commonwealth to become more of a participant in flood mitigation and response to recurrent flooding and large storm events than it is right now, which, to be fair, is they're not really responsive ahead of time. We do have Delegate Staley's Recurrent Flooding Commission that Mr. Wood is on, and they've been doing quite a bit of research over the years. We did, through the work of the, this council, have created the Special Assistant to the Governor on Recurrent Flooding. A retired Navy Admiral has been appointed to that position, and so the Commonwealth is taking a more active role. But this would be helpful in having the Commonwealth, for instance, become a sponsor of major core projects. Right now, the core, the state, to my knowledge, has never been a sponsor of a core project within Virginia, like the Hurricane Protection Project at the Oceanfront, the Richmond Sea Wall, or Storm Wall, Flood Wall, or any other major projects like in Norfolk, and it's been left up to the localities to come up with the mostly 35% match money with the federal 65%. So this would establish this commission that's to address Ms. Henley's concerns, is a little bit nebulous, and we, they, they do have quite a bit of wording down here with some specificity, but obviously, the, the, where the rubber hits the road is where you find out what the real impact is, and then they'd have to report, the governor have to report back, and Jay Lark would be involved, and they want to model it after the Louisiana Legislature's fiscal office efforts on how their efforts work on a situation like this and legislation like this. I don't believe North Carolina or Maryland have any authorities like this. I believe Florida, the state of Florida, does, and then Louisiana, I think Alabama, because of the hurricanes they've had in the past. So there's some other, the models elsewhere in the country that we could look at, but the legislation, again, is fairly lengthy, fairly specific. Senator Wagner and I felt very strongly about it, he actually had it introduced after the session that started, had to get unanimous consent, and it died in the money committees, both the Senate Finance and the House Appropriations Committee, because they just refused to put any money into this effort, because I think they, perhaps appropriately, but not rightly, see it as a opportunity for the Commonwealth to spend quite a bit of money, because this is a serious issue. I mean, we have, everybody east of the Fall Line is looking at flooding issues, Arlington and Alexandria have had flooding in recent years from Potomac River, but you have areas up in the western part of the state, Roanoke, Danville recently, just last week, had tremendous flooding.
That's correct.
And the Commonwealth didn't, has, doesn't have any real opportunity or mechanism by which it could go in and assist, make plans for preventing future flooding like that. And it is going to come with climate change and things like that. We're going to have more large rainfall events. If Tom Leahy was here, he'd say the 100-year event is now the 10-year event. Tom's told me that very often, and I know y'all have heard that same message from him. So what used to be a 100-year event, or a two- or three-lifetime event, is now something we can expect every 10 years. So this is certainly an area that needs to be addressed. This legislation, I think, would be a start, because we could probably get somebody from Legislative Services to come down and make a more informed presentation than I'm making right now, or perhaps even Senator Wagner, although it, it would be hard to do between now and the, with the holidays and so forth. But I'm sure we could get somebody from Legislative Services to come down and express what the interest is, or perhaps even Delegate Myers could make a presentation.
Well, since I started this, love to have their money. You know, we've gone pretty far, and we're ready to make some decisions and decide that we want to do some things. I don't want to do anything now that's gonna say, whoops, wait a minute, we've got to wait until the state says that, you know, like the smart scale rating on our roads, you know, we might have a whole different idea of what should be our top priority, but we have to go by this, whatever the state's come up with as rating these roads for smart scale. And I just don't want us to get into something like that, that means that we don't have the ability at the local level to work with our citizens and come up with what our citizens want. We've got to say, oh, wait a minute, we've got to go get this authority with the state to approve it. So I don't want to get into a mess like that.
I, I think, Madam Henley or Ms. Henley, we're probably in a position to be a leader in this, just like the city in Norfolk and the region, you know, was through Mayor Sussman's efforts that the region established their program to look at recurrent flooding and sea level rise, and we've certainly got a well-thought-out plan within the region. Nobody has a better plan under design than what we have right now, looking at, through y'all's leadership, looking at the various drainages and things like that. So we're going to have, I think, very shortly, by the end of the year, or soon after the first of the year, a very detailed plan, and some of the things we're looking at is making sure that the Navy, you know, Oceana, 6,000 acres sits in the middle of one of the drainages, goes to the south, goes to the east, but Dam Neck is, is very much impacted by recurrent flooding, and so we're gonna have to make sure that the Navy's involved in all this, too. So it's, it's the state, it's the Navy, it's the other military entities, and, and we're working, I think, really hard with y'all's leadership to get into a good position.
Well, I know, you know, we have this subcommittee from HRPDC now, the Resiliency Subcommittee, and at next week's session, we're supposed to be talking about what items should maybe be in the legislative package for the PDC, and I really think this should be a discussion, you know, of that committee, so that, you know, it can be a regional thing, because I really think we all are in this, in this Hampton Roads region especially together, and we need to be working together and all understand what we're doing, so.
I know Councilmember McClellan from Norfolk is a very big supporter of this, and very informed and very involved in this, and I think that might be a good place to have it come forward. Now, whether y'all want to just leave it for the region to propose or have it part of your legislative package, that's certainly y'all's decision.
It just seems to me that we need to take a leadership role in this issue.
As long as we're sure this is the right day.
To be honest with you, and I don't see the harm
I don't either.
in, in putting this in our legislative agenda. agenda, and if we can get the state involved and start helping us with money, or unless we ask them, they're not going to do it. So I, frankly, I support this, so.
Well, as long as that's the intent, and we, we're not approving a specific piece of legislation that may have wording in there that we're, you know, it's just so it's all still negotiable, but I'd love to see the state get more involved, and if this is the opportunity, I would support it as well.
When you go back and look at the history of this legislation, and one of the things that I know Bob probably knows is, it was the bond protection part, the state was concerned amount, the amount of bonded debt that the state might be, go on their books, was a big part of this, but I think if any of us think that there's going to be money coming from Washington or other people's money, and there isn't going to be conditions attached for people who give you money, you know, I think we're, we're, we're being foolish, because there's going to be something that goes with that. But I agree, we always want to maintain our autonomy as a city. We don't want to be subordinate to the region either, we want to act that, but I do think, I'm with the mayor, this is a, we can't bypass an opportunity and then try to, working with the senator and the delegates, people try to finesse it to the best we can, but we always said, and everyone on this body has said, we can't do it our own, it's going to take federal, state, and local money, and when you get state and federal money, there's state and federal strings. I mean, that's just the nature of the beast.
All right. Any further discussion? Yes, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
I also think it would send a really bad message if we removed it. If we removed it, I mean, what kind of thing would that be saying, so that this is not important to us?
Yeah.
So I think it's important to keep it in there.
So is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Number 23.
Second.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded by both Mr. Moss and Ms. Henley.
I think it was our...
Yeah, whatever.
Have we talked it out, folks?
Yep.
Ms. Henley, may I have your vote?
This vote.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved Item J. 23 to include in the legislative package regarding the hurricane and flood risk reduction and bond rating protection.
All right.
I still think you actually need to vote to approve the ones you separated these from. You separated them, but I don't think you voted to approve Items 1 through...
I thought we did.
We did.
We did.
We did, I remember voting.
You voted to separate them, but there, I don't, I didn't...
First vote was from 1 to 19, with the exceptions to 3 and 10.
But I didn't, neither I, and apparently nor the clerk understood that, to approve them. If, if that was the intent, I just wanted to make sure your, your, your record was clear.
About the motion being that all items that were affirmatively passed to be approved on the budget be considered a pass and approved as our legislative package. Does that work?
Yep.
I'm finding all the motions that we made in the affirmative, right? She knows what those are. Those constitute our legislative package.
We voted on each end of each one of them.
But you didn't vote on the group. You just voted to separate these from the group for separate consideration, but you never then said, we approved the group that we didn't separate out.
Are you saying we need to vote on the ones other than...
Yes, ma'am, that's what I'm suggesting.
I'll make, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we vote on Items 1, 2, Items 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 23 for our legislative package.
You've already done 23.
We did 23 separately.
And we did 3 and 10 already, right?
But you wanted all of them in there together, bro.
No, because you just...
Oh, good lord.
Because then you gotta, you gotta vote for the other ones that...
Never mind.
I, I am very sorry, but let me be clear about what I was saying. The motion that I wrote down was the motion to separate Items 3, 10, 20, 21, 22, and 23 for separate consideration. That passed 10 to 0. You then took separate votes on Items 3, 10, 20, 21, 22, and 23, but you did not vote on the other items that you separated these from. You separated them, but you did not vote to approve them, I don't believe.
Try it once again.
Let me try once again. I took everything but 23, is that correct?
No.
1 through 19.
Yeah.
With the exception of 3 and 10.
Except for the ones that we took out and separated. I make a motion that we approve Items 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 through 19 for our legislative package.
Second.
What about 22 and 23?
We voted on the second.
Those were separately voted on, and so we'll include those.
Okay, we'll take Shannon's motion and get this settled.
I already voted.
Has everybody voted?
Yes. By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the motion to approve the items as read by Council Lady Kane to be included in the legislative package.
I think Shannon, you were right from the beginning, we should just vote on each one separately, and that would have been easier.
Can you say that again?
Shannon was absolutely correct. Women are always smarter.
She, she wanted, she wanted to make sure everybody heard that.
The camera's still rolling.
I'll write it on note and sign it.
All right. So we've taken care of the legislative issue. Now we go to Item 4, which is Resolution Regarding the Effective Date of Prospective Regulations for Home Sharing and Short-Term Rentals.
Move to approve. I'm sorry, we have speakers. Yeah, sorry. So the first speaker is Herb Jones.
He left.
Mr. Jones left, okay. The second speaker I had signed up is Conrad Agresti. I'm sorry if I messed your last name up.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Michael Conrad Agresti. I reside at 501 Bushnell Drive in Virginia Beach. My phone number is 757-425-2068. I rise to oppose the implementation of the delay in this rec, the regulations regarding home sharing and short-term rentals. Proposed regulations have not changed appreciably for many months. None of the provisions is onerous. All can be implemented with a minimum of cost or effort. How onerous is, is it to wreck renters to use automatic trash, automated trash receptacles, or to install smoke detectors, to post city ordinances, increase insurance liability, provide a point of contact? It is not. The only justification for delaying implementation can be to roll the short-term rental grandfathering date from 1 July 2018 further to the right, allowing even more short-term rentals into our neighborhoods. Recently, where I live in Crofton neighborhood, recently had a short-term rental property that was being, we had squatters in there, and they had also burglarized other homes in the, in the neighborhood. Ladies and gentlemen, there's no justification for such a delay, unless it's to satisfy equit pro quo. That would create a very bad optic 3 weeks before Election Day. Thank you.
That's all the speakers on that item.
All right. May I have a motion?
I'd like to move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for approval. Any discussion on the motion? Vote is open.
By a vote of 9 to 1 with Ms. Henley voting nay, you have approved the motion for the effective date of regulations for home sharing and short-term rentals.
All right. Item...
8C.
8C. $500,000 in reimbursement from the Federal Emergency Management Agency to the fiscal year 2018-19 fire department operating budget, re-mobilization of the Virginia Task Force 2 urban search and rescue team for Hurricanes Lane, Olivia, and Florence.
We have one speaker, Bill Bailey.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, City Manager, Mr. Stiles. I'm here tonight to talk about this appropriation from FEMA for the 3 hurricanes. Tonight, we have FEMA team members who are out in the southeast United States doing search and rescues, and I'm here to talk about their pay tonight. The $500,000 that's being appropriated is not being computed, computed correctly, and as you're aware, I think you had a briefing this afternoon, we went to federal court on October 2nd and are awaiting a federal judge's determination. But I want to make clear in a Reader's Digest version as quickly as I can, this is the federal registry that covers the FEMA team management. It is called a 44 CFR Part 208. It tells you how FEMA team members are to be paid. The second thing, this is a city of Virginia Beach pay policy that says when team members are deployed out of Hampton Roads, they will be paid in accordance with the federal registry that determines how FEMA teams are managed. Now, we went to federal court because we were arguing about this issue for the last 10 years in the Virginia Beach Fire Department. I didn't realize at the time that you all could resolve this issue. Quite frankly, when we went to federal court in front of Judge Dumar, the city attorney representing the city of Virginia Beach said, and I quote, "So the point is, Your Honor, that the city of Virginia Beach, you ask, and I'll say in this way, Your Honor asks the question of Mr. Improvento," that's our attorney, "why wouldn't the city just pay them? That's a tough question, because I think we love our firefighters, they do a great service to our community, but the truth is, the city leaders and leadership of the city of Virginia Beach has established a pay policy which does not allow the city of Virginia Beach to request greater reimbursement. This change has to come at city council. You all, not in federal court, not in local court, from city council." Those are the words of the city attorney representing the city of Virginia Beach in federal court on October 2nd. I don't really care at this point what a federal judge rules, because quite honestly, all I need are 6 of you to give Mr. Hanson direction to pay the FEMA team members in accordance with the 44 CFR 208 that says those individuals have their supposed to be compensated. That's all it takes. This doesn't have to go to court, doesn't have to go anywhere else without any real conflict. All it takes is 6 of you to provide direction. Because of what the city attorney testified to in federal court, it's on you. And I thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to your support for the FEMA team members who are out there serving. Thank you very much.
That's all the speakers.
All right. May I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded for approval. Any further discussion? Vote is open.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the ordinance to appropriate the funds.
All right. Now go to, see, did we have any planning items? No. All right. Have we just do any appointments? So are there, is there any unfinished business? Any new business?
We did.
You made it easy for me. The meeting's adjourned.
I'm sure that we gave them...